I haven't been able to get my heart kind of died all night. You know, when I sat outside the house and it was so much, it was a little bit of a little bit of a problem. It was kind of bad to have that all day.
Yeah, you do that, just to write it down.
I know, and I wanted to do that. Yeah.
But you worked that way, right?
Yep.
So.
And I, you know, what you said. That's why I, yeah. There's a truth there, something on the side of the door that I always have to find. First, first thing that I have to do is sort of help those. Anyway, I can see now. We, um, we, um. Do you know that, I, I know.
Okay.
Oh, very funny.
I know, I'm seeing, I think it's one hundred and thirty-one, twenty-one.
Um, yeah, no, they.
I don't know what to break. What did you do with that? The, uh, this is for. Yeah. It was like, you want to be an actor.
What's the deal of the, yeah, right. Wherever there are voting buttons, that's where you, you have to go to do it. Start over.
Yeah, I was told not to bother about putting it out, just make sure the panel was out and the name tag or so, everyone knew, guess where. Hmm. Want to go get the sign up?
Well, there may happen that we can drop the cape. I might just, I got some. No, but you know what? Since, since planning was, I would always talk to, to the car, and I was like crashing the big party. I'm like, maybe they just talked to the last case.
You know, celebrating my everything, you want to take it all. Uh, then you give that. There are, you come in, you go right. No, I don't. I don't, I'm trying to stay.
Yeah, I know. I know.
This is, that's all. And what happened, what happened? And what happened, what happened?
I heard the car was out, he had, it was called, it was supposed to be, it was not, I mean, I mean.
I had, I had a problem, I didn't know how to talk to others. I didn't know that it was fast, and it was, you know, I was just calling to do that. Uh, I, I don't think it's going to make you tell them that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think people come and say, uh, uh.
I think you just, you just, you just, you just, you just, uh, uh, for the evening, I think, yes, too much. And, uh, yeah, I have, uh, I have a, uh, a, uh, uh. I mean, you might, you know. And, uh, I think you call it, uh, that, uh, it's, 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 it's.
Uh, yeah. Some of the things probably just, uh, you know, that's what, uh, there's, um, there's, uh, that's, uh. It, well, that's what it was, it was, uh, it was, uh, uh. There's, there's, uh, first, it was, it was, and, you know, you're asking, it was, uh, uh, uh. And so, you have to, uh, uh, uh. Well, it, it, uh, it was, it was, it was, uh, uh. So, yeah.
I think there's a lot of, uh, homework, uh, that you, you, uh, you can, uh, uh.
Right, because there was, I had enough of you. And so, there's a difference between where you're taking, like, one, two, ten, eleven, uh, uh. Yeah.
You think that, uh, you do, uh, 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 uh. Yeah, you don't do much, uh, 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 uh.
Right. Yeah, usually, uh, uh, why? And it was used, uh, 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 uh. I mean, you, uh, you, uh, uh. How many, uh?
I don't actually, uh, 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 how, uh, 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 uh. So, uh, 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 uh. The, uh, the last, uh, uh, uh. It was certainly, uh, 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 uh.
You know, I, I do wonder, uh, 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 uh. And I just, I just, I just felt, you know, there's, uh, people that can do things about, uh, 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 uh. And, and often, you know, I'll say, we can't possibly invite, uh, 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 uh. And it was, uh, 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 uh.
Not when you're, oh, yeah.
Some they thought, and they did have one, and I, uh, uh. But, um, the point is, it's possible. And so, when, when you decide to, uh, 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 uh. And here it goes, you know, he left all the time, he says, we won't watch. And it was, it wasn't watching, he did have to say, I'm gonna start it on, I'll have it. That's why, I, I, you know, it's, 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 uh, uh.
Really, it's all.
Well, it is, uh, and, and so, I, 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 uh, 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 uh. I know it's, uh, 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 uh. Then I, uh, 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 you were, and then I, uh, I don't think that's, uh, uh, uh. As you know, we can have time, uh, 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 uh. We can do, uh, 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 uh. And three times a time, and that's like, it's, uh, uh, uh. I did, I did, I did, uh, uh, uh. And, uh, uh, uh. I just, I said, you know, I, I, uh, 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 uh. So, the people, we didn't tell a lot of them, but I, uh, 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 uh. And that's, maybe, so, it was, it was, it was, you know, they were saying. I, 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 I probably, uh, 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 uh. It's, 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 uh, uh. But, uh, uh, I don't know. But, I'm sorry, God, I mean, that's, uh, 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 uh. That's, um, uh, 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 uh. It is, uh, 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 uh.
Oh.
I think most, they were, uh, 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 uh. That's, uh, 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 uh. They had, uh, uh, uh.
Um, yeah, uh, 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 uh. Didn't try to, uh, 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 uh.
Oh. Yeah.
Um, that, that's, uh, uh, uh. Uh.
And, um, and, um, and, uh, and, uh, uh, uh. You know, I'm not, I know, uh, um, very surprised, uh, uh, uh. I've done, uh, 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 uh. Um, so, we, uh, 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 uh. If there's something, uh, 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 uh. I think that, uh, uh, uh. Uh, 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 uh. For, uh, 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 uh.
Uh, 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 uh.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, uh. I, uh, uh, uh.
Uh, uh, uh. I think, I think, uh, uh, uh. That, uh, that would be, uh, 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 uh. I have my, uh, 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 uh. I would, uh, 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 uh. Yeah, absolutely. I can still, uh, 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 uh. And, uh, uh. I don't think they're, uh, uh.
Uh, 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 uh.
Yes. So, they got, uh, 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 uh. They're, uh, 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 uh. My office, uh, 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 uh.
Yeah, you can say that, uh, 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 uh. You can, uh, 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 uh. You guys, uh, 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 uh. I think, uh, 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 uh.
Sometimes, uh, 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 uh. I'm glad, uh, uh, uh.
Uh, uh, uh.
Now, you said, um.
You said, uh, uh. But, uh, uh, uh.
Uh, 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 uh.
You, uh, uh, uh.
Okay. You know, uh.
You know, you know, uh, uh.
I, I know that, uh, 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 uh.
Oh.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
You know, uh, uh, uh. So, uh, uh, uh. Uh, uh, uh.
Uh, 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 uh.
Yeah, uh, uh, uh. You go, uh, 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 uh.
Uh, uh, uh. Uh, uh, uh. Oh, you, you, uh, uh. No, we're gonna, uh, 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 uh.
Uh, uh.
Down the bottom. Yeah. It's a light now, it's an electric. Yeah.
How do you, uh, uh, uh?
What? What? Uh, uh, uh. No, I get a lot, uh, 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 uh. Uh.
Oh.
Or maybe it's, uh, uh, uh. Uh, 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 uh.
Oh, you, oh, you know me, I, I, I always say that.
I know you couldn't shut up. Uh, no. You have to, uh, uh, uh.
I can't even realize, uh, uh, uh.
Uh. He didn't, uh, uh, uh.
Yeah, that's a lot, uh, 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 uh. Uh, uh, uh. Uh, uh.
Uh. Uh, 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 uh. Um. I, uh, uh.
Seeing none, the concerned agenda items are approved. We have no appearance requests this evening. On our unfinished business, item F, we have no unfinished business or public hearings. There are no items on our regular agenda. That moves us on to our public hearings cases this evening. We have tonight a six-member board for everyone in attendance this evening. We don't have a short board, which is what occurs when we have a five-member board. In that instance, we offer the petitioner the opportunity to postpone for a, to the next available meeting. Because we don't have a short board, we are not offering that to the petitioners tonight. But I do want to let everyone know that if a postponement is requested by the petitioner, there's a $750 rescheduling fee, and a new public hearing date shall be determined by the department. I offer that because it is a requirement for a majority of the fully constituted board. So there will be a need for five of the six members voting tonight in favor of your cases. With that, I would like to go through the order of business for variances, and then we'll move on to our first case. The order of business is, A, the chair will introduce the case. The board will hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The board will hear a brief staff presentation outlining the case, not to exceed 10 minutes. The board may then question the staff. The applicant will give his or her presentation, not to exceed 10 minutes. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests on the applicant to convince the board by a preponderance of evidence that the variance should be granted. After the applicant's presentation, the board and the staff may question the applicant. The staff will have an opportunity to rebut the applicant's presentation, not to exceed three minutes. The board and the applicant, may they then question the staff? The applicant will then have an identical opportunity for rebuttal. The hearing will then be open for public testimony. Each person has three minutes. After the public hearing, the staff, followed by the applicant, have the right of rebuttal. Then the matter rests with the board. The chair asks for a positive motion from the board. That brings us to our first case this evening, case 2009-055. The petitioner is Kim Heimy. Is she here this evening? The petitioner is here. Mr. Barrett, could you provide us with the sufficiency of notice, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two hundred and one public hearing notices were mailed for this item. We had ten received in support of Ms. Heimy's application. There were none received in opposition to the variance request, but the case does result from a complaint in the neighborhood, and I can give you details about that if you like. There was no comment from the community council, and the property was posted with a public hearing sign and advertised. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Would you proceed with your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, there are a series of photographs, beginning on stamped page 12 of the package, and I'm just asking to make sure everyone's photographs were legible, that they were in color. I do have the original colors. If you couldn't see them, all right, good, thank you. This is a request to allow a fence within the front yard setback to be taller than four feet. The fence is approximately six feet in height. In residential zoning districts, fences in the front yard are not allowed to exceed four feet. There is an as-built on page two of the package, and a marked-up as-built on page three of the package. You can see the fence. There's a circle around the northwest corner and near the northeast corner of portions of the fence, showing what portions of the fence are actually in violation. And then about a quarter of the way down the property, there should be a red line running left to right. That's the legal fence setback for a front yard in this zoning district. So you can see from the two drawings that the area of the violation is actually relatively On page 21 of the package, there is an historical as-built from, I believe it was 1984, excuse me, 1998, that shows the fence in essentially the same location as it is today. You will notice, though, in comparing the drawings, that a fence has been added across the front yard. But that is labeled on the drawing on page three as being only four feet in height. So therefore, that portion of the fence is legal. The house on this property was built in 1947. The subdivision was created in 1948, and it created, and it, excuse me, consisted of the original lot one, which is also shown on a drawing in your package. Ms. Heimy currently owns the west one-half of lot one, and her neighbor owns the east one-half. I only mention that because the property was subdivided by deed, and we've not been able to establish when that happened. So as a condition of approval of the variance, Ms. Heimy will be required to register that lot as a legal non-conforming lot. The Moran subdivision is, for the most part, single-family homes and duplexes to the north and east of the subject property. Commercial B3 zoning is immediately to the south and west of the subject property. The property to the south is a high-rise, high-density apartment building, and the property to the west is a parking lot and warehouse for a bakery. The lot is approximately 91 by 98 feet square, and it's typical in size and shape to other lots in the area. What is a little bit unusual is that the lot is at the intersection of two streets and has an alley on the west side. And if you refer to the drawing on page three, I have just sketched in, in the northwest corner, Anton Way coming in from the northwest. That merges with 23rd Avenue, and then Dahl Lane, which is a one-way alley, runs down the west side of the property. For a good picture or a good description of how this area is developed, there is an area-wide zoning, there is an area zoning map on page 25 of the package. You can see that Ms. Heimy's property clearly abuts a lot of commercial property and is only about one-half block from Spinard Road. Regarding the seven standards, number one, that there exists exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property. The standard is partially met. There aren't any creeks or wetlands or slopes that we normally think of as physical issues, but the plat is old, and the lot is at the intersection of two streets and an alley. This is subjecting, this subjects the property to a lot of pass-by motor vehicle traffic. There's also a lot of pass-by pedestrian traffic, plus the property is adjacent to commercial operations on the west and high-density residential operations on the south. Standard number two, because of the physical circumstances, strict application of the lot would create an exceptional or undue hardship. The standard is partially met. It is only partially met because, standard number one, the physical circumstances are only partially met. But it probably would create an undue hardship to deny the variance. Ms. Heimy would lose just eyeballing at approximately 25 percent of her front yard if the fence had to be moved back. But the real issue is that the fence is there for protection from traffic, noise, public safety, and privacy issues due to the amount of motor vehicle and pedestrian traffic in that area. Furthermore, fences over four feet tall are fairly common in this area. Standard three, the hardship is not self-imposed. That standard is also partially met. First, because the physical peculiarity of the property is only partially met. However, the need for the variance was not created by the owner. The fence has been there since at least 1998, and one of those 10 letters in support of the variance is from a previous owner who states she lived at the property from 1972 to 1980, and the fence was in place at that time. Unfortunately, that's not been anything that we've been able to verify. However, the standard is at least partially met. Standard four, the variance will not adversely affect adjacent property. That standard is substantially met. There are no structural separation issues. There's no drainage or runoff issue. The fence is not in the right-of-way, nor does it obstruct the traffic vision triangle at the intersection of the two streets and the alley. Street maintenance did not respond to a specific request for issues regarding snowplowing and so forth. But having seen Dahl Lane with snow and without snow, I would suspect that the alley does not get a lot of maintenance. Also, the fence has been in place for at least 10 years and does not have, appear to have affected the neighborhood adversely. Standard five, the variance, if granted, is in keeping with the intent of the code. That standard is substantially met. The real reason for not allowing very tall fences at the front or in the front yard setback is to avoid a walled-in appearance of properties, and that is not the case on this property, especially along 23rd Avenue. You can see that pretty clearly from the photographs. The fence is tall along Dahl Avenue, but it matches the fence that's six feet tall. It's put up by the bakery, but that just provide, that is for the purpose of providing safety, security, and to keep pedestrians off the property. The security fence does not appear to change the character of the zoning district in this case. Standard six, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare. That standard is substantially met. In its location, the fence does not appear to present any health or safety issues. There haven't been any significant negative comments from the neighborhood. And standard number seven, the variance, if granted, is the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the property. To move the fence back to the full setback would cost Ms. Heimy about a quarter of her yard, and if you look at the as-built or the drawing on pages two and three, you can see that that side of her house is really her yard. That's a combination front and side yard, so she needs as much of it as she can in order to have a usable yard. And again, it's related to the issues of privacy and safety. Also, I am not an arborist, but in looking at the fence on both sides of the property, it would, it would appear that relocating the fence could easily require two or three trees on the west, and at least one tree on the east part of the property would have to be taken out in order to relocate the fence. As standards one, two, three, and seven are only partially met, the department has to recommend denial. However, there are three conditions on page 11, should the board find for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Are there any questions of staff? Mr. Marsh?
Mr. Barrett, I've been looking through all the filings here, and you mentioned there was a complaint about this, and I don't, everybody seems happy that I'm reading here, so maybe I'm missing a complaint, then it seems like you don't have any strong feelings against the fence there, so I'm sort of wondering, who cares?
Well, a little history, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Marsh. The complaint was actually a code enforcement complaint, and it's a, it's a very good case of sour grapes. A neighbor about two blocks to the east had what could only be politely described as a storage yard in his front yard, R2M property. He was cited by code, and instead of remedying the situation, he put up a very tall fence. So then code cited him for a very tall fence, and his version of retribution was to go around the neighborhood, and he's turned in about, I would say, eight or 10 of his neighbors in the area. Some of those cases have already been before you, some are still to come. But again, is this a case of no harm, no foul to the neighborhood, and does it give Ms. Heimy the privacy and security she needs? I think we can honestly say yes. This, this for me is more an issue of, for a fence, it's often very difficult to meet standard number one. What's physically unusual about a property that means the fence can be reasonably related to the variance, so I have a little difficulty with that, that standard, but I think the safety and privacy issues kind of trump that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barrett. So this is the case of the Spinard Fence Wars. Okay, they are aptly put. Are there any other questions, Mr. Barrett? Mr. Friedus?
Yes, I have a couple for staff. Mr. Barrett, is this close to the schools? Does it present any type of a safety issue with traffic not being able to see around the corner or anything like that that we need to be concerned about here?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Friedus, no, it does not. I did have traffic come out there with me on a trip back in the winter, and what keeps the traffic vision triangle from not being a problem is that the fence is setback approximately five feet in that northwest corner. So you can see from both Anthony and 23rd, but also that Dahl Avenue is a one-way to the south. If Dahl Avenue were a two-way street, there might be some other issues, but traffic was Young school students and so forth, no, sir, we did not see that as a problem.
So weighing the safety of having the security of the homeowner versus lack of security, you'd say that weighted very heavily to the homeowner's side?
Yes, sir. It is subject to a lot of pedestrian bypass traffic, pass-through traffic, and I'm sure Ms. Heimy can give you some specifics.
And my next question is, if, you've indicated that the tall fences are fairly common in the area, and it's not out of character with the rest of the area. When we get a complaint like this, and we give a citation to an individual like this, what is our policy, then? Do we go out and cite everybody that's in violation of this, or do we leave the others alone?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Friedus, the code enforcement attitude is still to respond to complaints. So when this gentleman with the storage yard in his front yard went about, code enforcement did send letters, they call it a notice of violation. It's a formal letter, but it's, excuse me, very mildly worded. It's been reported to us that you may have a violation so-and-so consisting of, and then the explanation of what it is. So yes, regardless of where the complaint originally came from, anyone that is verified as being in violation gets the letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Friedus, and thank you, Mr. Barrett. Any other questions of staff? Seeing none, if the petitioner could come forward, please. If you could state and spell your name for the record, please.
Kim Heimy, last name J.A.I.M.E., first name K.I.M.
Thank you, Ms. Heimy. You have 10 minutes, and as I'd stated earlier, we must find all seven standards are, have been met, so if you could have your presentation address those, please.
Okay, good evening. And I'll just start with number one, if some of what I'm saying is repeating, Mr. Barrett, I apologize. My lot was constructed under irrelevant different plaque construction and zoning laws. I think in the package it says 1948. I have very challenging traffic and zoning issues because I'm adjacent to two streets and a one-way alley, and next to two commercial properties, a parking lot for the Wonderbread Bakery, as well as the Wren South Towers, which is a dual residential, commercial, high-rise building. And then finally, I'm one block from a busy Spinard interception that has a lot of pass-by traffic and actually into the neighborhood through this one-way alley, which I'm going to just mention briefly at the end, which is a separate subject. My lot, she needs to done because I'm adjacent, I'm looking at number two, I'm adjacent to an alley and commercial zoning in two of my frontages, and I have a lot of exposure to noise and headlight issues, and have a need for security and privacy because of the alley and the location of my lot. To confirm, I would have to take out mature trees and landscaping that have been on the property for, I believe, well over 20 years. I bought the home in 1998, and everything was as is when I bought it. Security and privacy may importantly be compromised, and I believe it would encourage pedestrian traffic because my lot name would then not be clearly delineated. There would also be the maintenance issue of the property that would be outside the Going to number three, I purchased the property, as I mentioned, in 1998, and the fence already existed. A previous owner cited in the letters that were sent that she erected the fence in the 70s or 80s, and I'm guessing because of where the lot was for some of the same reasons. The variance is desired to, to keep in place security, privacy, due to crime, trespassing, and noise issues in my area. The design of the fence in relation to the land and landscaping would mean that I would lose a large chunk of my front yard, have to cut down mature trees, and the rest essential to the security and privacy and noise reduction of the center because around the classroom, the Wonderbread Bakery parking lot, and they started those trucks very early in the morning. And also, the classroom is spinard and next to an alley where I regularly pick up liquor bottles, condoms, syringes. It's funny, just two days ago, my son, who's seven, I'm a single mom in this home, brought me a syringe next to the fence, next to the alley that was in our yard, and I took it from him, and it had the needle intact, and I asked Mr. Barrett actually if I should bring it for effect, and he said that might be way too much. But this alley is, I don't even understand why it's there. It's one direction into a parking lot, the Wren South parking lot, so it's a place for vagrants to come, to hide out, for people to use drugs, for people to wreck their dogs and not clean up after them. I've heard fights in the alley, and it is also a way, I think, for criminals to get out of our neighborhood quickly. We don't need the alley. We have three other accesses in and out of the property. I'm very vulnerable due to the alley issue, and the fence gives us a feeling of security. As well, there are other tighter fences in the area, as Mr. Barrett noted, and the neighborhood is very old, there's, doesn't appear to be any zoning or consistency to the homes and the fences and the yards, but it's a wonderful, old and pretty neighborhood. Pointing to number four, the fence has been in place for more than two decades. It's adjacent to an alley and not a neighbor's yard. Going to number five, the fencing and landscaping are attractive, they add value, I believe, to not only the property but that neighborhood corner because a lot of the homes on Anton Way and West 23rd look into commercial properties, and it's not an attractive look in that corner because of my fence and the landscaping, I believe, as well as some of the letters that add value. Looking to number six, I believe that the variance will maintain the look of the neighborhood and the property, which is subject to commercial zoning, right at our doorsteps. It's not a cookie cutter neighborhood, and we are, again, subject to being very close to small commercial businesses. Pointing to number seven, if the fence is made, it would result in mature trees being taken down and a large chunk of the yard being placed outside the fence. It would also result in loss of privacy and security, increase the noise and light into the property, and have an unobstructed view to an intersection of utility poles and lines from the other road. And then finally, I would just say that of all the things that I've mentioned, that the most important issue to me is, as a single mom, being in this property on this corner, which is sort of a suspect corner and has a lot of different issues going on, the fence gives us a feeling of privacy and security. I believe it keeps out people who could easily hop over for a foot fence, and for those reasons, I would ask you to consider this variance, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Heimy. Are there any questions of the applicant? Seeing none, does staff have any questions? Thank you, Ms. Heimy. That moves on to a public hearing. The hearing will be open for public testimony. Is there anyone here wishing to testify regarding this case this evening? Anyone at all? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. The staff, does staff have any rebuttal? No, thank you. Ms. Heimy, do you have any rebuttal based on the testimony you haven't heard? With that, the matter rests with the board. Could I have a positive motion, please?
In case 2009-55, I move that the board grant a variance from AMC 2145 Form 10 to allow a fence taller than allowed by the code and crutch the front yard setback and subject to the conditions that staff has put forth on page 11 of the packet.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Could I have a second, please? Thank you. Mr. Vig has seconded. Thank you, Mr. Vig. Mr. Marsh, would you speak to your motion, please?
I intend to support the granted variance. I think that staff has, except for a few conditions, offered the opinion they're met. For the ones that they don't speak strongly on, they say partially met. I think supplemented with the arguments in the petitioner's filing on pages 59 to 71 of the packet, if you supplement staff's factual findings on the conditions with the arguments that petitioner makes more strongly, I think the case is made. In case someone has hesitation on condition number one, I don't have any hesitation on that. When I look at page 26 here, the unusual configuration of the streets, and also, it's obvious that there's some sloping involved adjacent to the area. I think that the geography of this particular lot in this neighborhood, it's sort of inherited from Anchorage's developing days when Spinard and Anchorage were separate places, and so I think that the standards are all met.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Mr. Vig?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, too, intend to support the request and agreed with Mr. Marsh's statements on his findings, in particular, in particular Anton Way at the diagonal approach to the property. I can, I can certainly appreciate the fact that that's, although it's not on the subject property itself, it certainly has an impact to its safety and security, and I view that as a circumstance that, that I believe supports item number one as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Is there anyone else? Mr. Burkhart? Thank you.
I also intend to support the variance request. In reference to both standard number one and standard number three, I think the additional circumstance here that I ascribe as being a physical condition of the land is really the use character of the adjacent properties. This property is founded on two sides by B3 commercial districts, and I think that's a somewhat unusual condition. And as far as standard number three, that that's clearly outside of the, of the doings of the petitioner that, so I think the hardship here is really partly because of the... So I think the hardship here is really partly because of the proximity to the B3 zoning district on two different sides of the property.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhart. Mr. Freitas?
Yes, I also intend to support the motion and agree with Mr. Burkhart's interpretation of standard number one. In addition, I believe that because of the alley, the diagonal streets, as well as the commercial property, I do also agree that that makes for a strong case for the exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances. In addition, on number three, hardship not being self-imposed with the age and the commonality of this same violation in the neighborhood, I have to feel that that is actually more substantially met than partially met. Also, I'd like to state that I think that the reasons for this, as I understand it, really is more of a security and safety measure for a family and her child, and I feel that it's important that we give weight to the safety and security of a family over a violation which is common in the neighborhood with the physical circumstances that we see here that usually do not exist in most residential properties. One, the real objection is other neighbors close by in the same residential neighborhood with residential uses, and I do believe that strongly is unique in this situation.
Thank you, Mr. Freitas. Is there anyone else? Would Mr. Van Fong wish to...
I can't be the only one not talking, right? I tend to support the petition and the motion as well, and I think Mr. Burkhart did a good job supplementing the staff's comments, and I agree with what he says, and there's the map in there that shows this is kind of almost an island of residential zoning surrounded by commercial, and I think that's fairly compelling, and is probably some of the reason why the petitioner has experienced, you know, some of the pass-through traffic, whether it's cars or pedestrian, because of the commercial businesses nearby, and I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Van Fong. I'm assuming since everyone else has spoken, there's no one else. I would, I'd just like to state, I will support the motion as well, and I find, I think standard seven is substantially met in the fact that they are not lucky to put a six-foot fence over the entire length of the setback. It's just in very local, isolated areas that I think there's been testimony on the validity and the logic of having a six-foot fence in those locations. So for all the reasons stated above, I intend to support the motion as well. Please vote. That motion passes by a vote of, it received the six, five votes were necessary to pass, it received six, so that motion passes. I should state, any party agrees that this decision has thirty days to appeal to Superior Court. The thirty-day appeal period commences to run upon mailing of the written notice. With that, we move on to our second case of the evening. It's case 2009-068. The petitioner is James Milhouse. Is the petitioner here this evening? Petitioner's representative here?
Yes.
Yes. Could staff, please present the sufficiency of notice, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eighty-five public hearing notices were mailed for this item. We received two in support of the application. Nothing in objection, no comments from the community council, and the property was posted with a public hearing notice sign and advertised in the newspaper.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Would you proceed with your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know there are no photographs, excuse me, in this one, so I grabbed a few on the way home, and I'll pass those around, but before I get up, I would just say that it is my fervent hope that this is Mr. Burkhart's plain vanilla variance that he's been waiting for for two months.
We'll see about that. Two months, how many years has he been on the board?
And I don't say that just in jest. The reason I think it's a plain vanilla case is because under most circumstances, this case would have qualified for an administrative variance. The section of the code dealing with administrative variances, and I'll go into it just for a minute because Ms. Chambers did devote one, two, two and a half pages to a discussion of what an administrative variance is and where it comes from. For all purposes, if the issue did not occur prior to 1999, you can't get an administrative variance specifically in this case on page stamped number five, about one-third of the way down the page. Sorry, first up, it's item number two at the top of page five. In finding for an administrative variance, you have to find excusable neglect exists, and also if the problem is not the owner's and did not occur prior to 1999 but was the result of a professional such as a surveyor who utilizes Title 21 on a regular basis, you cannot apply for an administrative variance. So even though it meets the minor dimensional part of it, even though it's not causing anyone any life, safety issues, because it was a result of a surveyor, you cannot do, excuse me, an administrative variance for it. And as long as we're on page five, if you would take a look at item F, this code section shall be reviewed by the zoning board of examiners' appeals at least every two years. This was adopted October 16th, 1999, and I don't think we've ever looked at it. So I asked Mr. Weaver about it this morning, and he said, definitely let's examine some of the Catch-22 type language that exists in the administrative variance section, see if we can make it a little bit more straightforward, maybe resemble the pre-1986 setback rules that we often use on non-conformities that you occasionally see. So next month, I'll try and have some draft language for you just for discussion purposes, and then in July, we'll try to have it as a code change, an action item on your agenda in July. So with all of that out of the way, this is a request for a sideyard encroachment. It's all one zoning, and there is a five-foot sideyard setback required. The house, the northwest corner, that is the northwest corner, northeast corner, encroaches into the sideyard setback by 0.32 feet. That's approximately 3.6 inches. And you've got the photos, and on one of them, you can see an arrow pointing to that corner, that back corner of the house where the encroachment occurs. Because standards one and two are only partially met, the department can't give a clear recommendation for denial, but because this would ordinarily have qualified as an administrative variance, I think you could tell where our sympathies lie. There was a permit applied for the house in 2004. The plot plan that was submitted with the application, which is shown on page 047 of the report, does show the house in a conforming location with that corner setback at five feet. The problem, and it's related to standard number one, is that during the staking of the lot or the house or both, and at the beginnings of construction when the land was being prepared, one of the corner stakes for the house was apparently knocked down and either not replaced or was put back in the wrong location. But Mr. Forbes, the surveyor, is here, and he can give you much more of the history than I am able to. Regarding the standards, number one, that there exists exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances, the standard's partially met. What's unusual about the property is that during plating and preparation of the land, it was discovered that there is a very significant amount of peat and other unsuitable materials on site, estimates of thirteen to sixteen feet. That meant a lot of ground clearing, and it also meant drainage issues for the subdivision. And what apparently happened, and again, I'll rely on Mr. Forbes for this, is the lot and the house footprint were staked, but as peat was being removed or other issues were being addressed, one of the corners, the corner in question, the stake there, was lost, knocked down, whatever, and when the builder began working on it, he was only working from three offsets for the property lines instead of from four. So standard one is partially met. There does seem to have been a land preparation error or issue that caused the loss of one of the stakes. Standard two, because of the circumstances, the strict application of the code would create an exceptional or undue hardship. That standard does seem to be at least partially met. Moving the house for approximately 3.6 inches doesn't really seem to change anything. It's a very minor encroachment. Regarding standard number three, the hardship is not self-imposed. The standard is substantially met. The first part of that standard, there is something physically peculiar about the lot, the extensive ground preparation because of all the peat is that natural physical condition. And secondly, the error actually seems to have been caused not by the surveyor but one of the builder's subcontractors who apparently did not report what had happened, and the error was only discovered during application for a CO. Therefore, the hardship does not appear to be self-imposed. Regarding standard four, if granted, does not adversely affect the use of adjacent property. The standard is met. No fire separation issues, no safety issues have been identified, traffic visibility is not affected, project management and engineering's not identified any further drainage issues, and all the other all-one zoning standards, lot area, lot width, et cetera, have all been met. Standard five, the variance, if granted, is in keeping with the intent of the code. That standard is met. The request is for a very minor dimensional encroachment. Standard six, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect health, safety, welfare, also met. No fire separation issues, drainage not an issue, no concerns expressed by the neighbors. And standard seven, the variance granted is a minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land. I think we can honestly say that a 3.6-inch encroachment is de minimis, and under other circumstances, this would have qualified for an administrative variance. The department didn't take a strong position on making a recommendation, although a couple of the standards are only partially met, but we do have two conditions on page 10 should the board find for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Are there any questions of staff? Mr. Marsh?
Well, Mr. Barrett, I think we had this conversation ten or fifteen years ago. I remember twenty years ago, I was the board's lawyer, and I've sometimes wondered if anything has changed, and I've concluded, no, it hasn't. So what do people pay now to apply like Mr. Milhouse here? What's the filing fee?
Single-family home, Mr. Marsh, is $600.
$600, so this is like $125 an inch is what we're doing here?
You can ask the inspector. Let me add in just a bit, since you did raise it. The applicant was advised first to seek an administrative variance because we were not certain of the history of this. Administrative variances are $600. When the administrative variance was turned down, the owner was not charged again for this regular variance, so he's out with the $600.
Well, one of my favorite comments by, I guess, a neighbor of all time was in this packet here, and let's see if I can find it here, I think the person says, please stop wasting public time on this or something like that, and so I think we have some sympathies with that, but nevertheless, I guess when I asked about it many years ago, I think Mr. Burkhart was even here, and he used to say, how accurate is surveying today? And I didn't ask that since they have super-duper GPSs, but how accurate is this surveying anyway if we're going to start having these kind of cases again? Is it within one inch or two? I don't really know.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Marsh, the zoning code does take that into account. It does allow for a 0.1 tolerance, and that is shown in that section of the code under administrative. But as to the technical questions, I mean, most of the surveys we see are right on, but Mr. Forbes and Mr. Burkhart would be better at answering it. But again, for this case, it's the case of the missing stake.
Okay. Well, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Marsh, Mr. Barrett. Are there any other questions of staff? Mr. Burkhart?
I guess I've got a question in relation to the administrative variance process. I guess I was unaware that the non-conformity had to occur before 1999. I guess that might be when the procedure was instituted, but I guess I don't recall. Is that one of the things that staff's going to be taking a look at in terms of, was that the intent of the ordinance that it would only cover those items before 1999?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Burkhart, yes. At the bottom of page four, under definitions, applications for administrative variances from construction errors which existed prior to the effective date of this ordinance, and that's October 16th, 99, may be made by the property owner. We don't really know the significance of 1999. On those other kinds of setback encroachments, what I refer to as the pre-1986, there's a logical reason for that date, 1986. It's because that's when building safety started requiring as-built be submitted. This one, we're really not sure. It's just the date somebody decided they would do it. I think the intent has clearly been to give the property owner a break, not to penalize professionals in the business. So what I hope we're going to be looking at is either a change in the date or a change that deletes the section in number two, which states that applicants involved in the professional trades which utilize Title 21 shall not be granted a variance under this section for errors and objectively reasonable and prudent person, et cetera, et cetera. So I hope somewhere in those changes, and we'll get you some draft language by next month, and then go final with it in July, I hope one or more of those sections are going to be what we come up with to make it a code section that gives the homeowner a break for a problem he is unable to track down rather than a code section which penalizes a professional by saying, you're just out, you can't do this.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of staff? Mr. Freitas?
Yes, Mr. Barrett, I'm surprised you didn't bring us all vanilla ice cream on a stick to celebrate, but as I understand it, then, the only reason we're not doing this as an administrative is because of that code that requires prior to the date. Otherwise, you would have done it that way, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would hope, then, that when you bring this forth to the zoning board of examiners' and appeals to be reviewed, that we have all the necessary elements in there to remove that, possibly even remove the date, but I would caution us not to try to change anything that takes responsibility away from the professionals, because I would hate to see it used as a crutch to cover the mistakes that should have and could have been corrected.
Are there any other questions of staff? Mr. Vig?
Don't mean to pile on, Mr. Barrett, but I read the administrative variance requirements, and as near as I could understand it, the reason for denial of that was because, number one, the applicant wasn't...
one, the applicant wasn't the person who created the problem, and that, secondly, the professional made the error. But as I read the definitions, the significance of the date really speaks to who may submit the application in the first place, and not whether an administrative variance could be granted in any case.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, I think I agree with you. Let's do a hypothetical. Suppose the construction error was only discovered today, but we are able to verify that it occurred prior to October 16th, 1999, the effective date of the ordinance. The owner can bring the case forward as an administrative, but if in discovering, and this, I think, is what the intent was, how are you going to discover something, an owner is going to discover something that happened that long ago, what was the cause for it? We don't know. That's difficult, I mean, but in this example, let's say that we were able to discover that the building, the error, the encroachment was caused by a professional in the trades. It's out the window. It met all the other standards for an administrative variance, but because it was a survey error or builder error, contractor error, it's not an administrative variance any longer.
Thank you. I was going to get to that part, because as I read it, it says that, it doesn't say that there may not be any errors, but whether the errors would be something that an objectively reasonable and prudent person in their trade knew or should have known, and I would make the case that a discrepancy of 3.6 inches on this kind of a situation would be something that would be almost impossible to detect, and therefore should have met that item number two.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, I think I could agree with that. In fact, though, what actually happened, and I was not involved in the process, is that the people who sign off on this knew that a survey stake had been knocked down, had not been replaced, had not been reported when they should have. So a person reasonably responsible in the trades should have known that if you knock down a survey stake, you don't just ignore it. And I believe that's why the folks who did not approve the administrative variance refused to sign it.
Are there any other questions of staff? Seeing none, will the petitioner, the petitioner's representative come forward and state your statements by your name for the record, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Charles Forbes, H-A-R-L-L-E-S, F-O-R-B-E-S. I'm a landlord, I'm here to represent the petitioner. We agree with staff's analysis, and really appreciate what Mr. Vig had to say, he hit to the heart of the problem, and there's really going to be a lot of stuff, where the problem first started was when the application was brought in. The application was brought in by the homeowner, but it was filled out by the contractor. He just was trying to expedite matters and brought it in for the contractor, and was told at the desk taking it in that he needed to change it over to his name because he was the owner. Then it went up to the administrative permit, and for no, obviously, you know, we were going on, who could apply for it? Obviously, it couldn't be the owner, so it was partial denial for the administrative variance. And, you know, it was kind of like things started to snow down, and we couldn't stop it. So we ended up having to come before this board. But as far as bringing a survey error, unfortunately, the other people aren't here that are willing to survey error, it is for taking three stakes and laying off the halves from them. That's not all that unusual. Most time, it'd be benefitive, are we giving this three stakes and just lay the halves up on it. The only difference that this is, is that we're working off offsets. And I don't know if you know the business of the subdivision, but straight across the screen, you can see how deep they had to dig out. You know, it wouldn't be unusual if you had them to dig that deep that you would have some moving of soil where the stakes weren't as pristine as they should have been. But we would also stake another half simultaneously with this one, and there was no problem with that. So we are strongly believe that it was laying off the foundation is where the problem came. And, you know, I couldn't detect it unless I actually surveyed it again. And we do believe it is de minimis, and we do believe that we've met our certain conditions of the requirement, and I'd reserve this my time for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Forbes. Are there questions of the petitioner's representative? Mr. Burkhart.
Not a question so much as a comment. I understand you're probably not the contractor, or the builder, or the designer of this house, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But I guess, like, looking at the plot plan, if you put a 40-foot wide house on a lot that's 50-foot wide, and you have two side yard setbacks, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to find that, you have to be pretty exact in terms of not having, you know, 0% tolerance for error when you're doing something like that. But, yeah, I can appreciate in terms of the exactitude, but I guess in my mind, yeah, this is essentially a de minimis type variance.
Are there any other questions of the petitioner? I just have one, it's a follow-up to Mr. Burkhart's. I concur with his statement regarding a 50-foot lot and a 40-foot building, but is it, just for the benefit of some of the other board members, you excavate down 10 feet, let's say, for a foundation, typically when you stake a house, you don't go back in after the house, after the excavation has occurred, to stake where the foundation's going to be, or to pin that foundation. It's, as you said, they pull those dimensions in off offsets, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So again, you're up here today, but it's really, you know, any error that did occur is probably most likely from the contractor, the builder, that excavated the foundation. And it would be nice if they would go that extra step to compensate the surveyor, to have him come back in and stake that after excavation.
Some do.
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Burkhart.
And I guess there's one other question I have, that if I add up the string of dimensions across the front of the house, it actually comes up to a little bit more than 50 feet, and my guess is that that's because the house isn't true on the lot, and that's why you end up with the .2 feet, I guess, that adds up to over the 50 feet.
And the side, yes?
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Forbes. Does staff have any question of the applicant?
No, thank you.
Thank you. But with that, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing none, the public hearing closes, is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No, thank you.
The petitioner have any rebuttal?
If, actually, regarding administrative variance, I almost know by heart, if you guys have any questions on it, typically I'd be glad to assist.
Thank you, Mr. Forbes. We'll keep that in mind. With that, the matter rests with the board, and Mr. Freitas has made a motion. Mr. Freitas.
Yes, regards to case number 2009-068, request from James Millhouse petitioner regarding AMC 21-40-030G, which requires a 5-foot side yard setback to allow a house to encroach .32 feet into the required 5-foot side yard setback. I agree with all of staff's interpretations of the standards.
Just one minute, Mr. Freitas, could we have a, you need to approve it subject to...
Yes, I'm sorry, positive motion to approve.
Subject to the two conditions on...
Correct.
Page 10.
And on page 10, subject to staff's recommendations of number one and number two.
Thank you, Mr. Freitas. Could we have a second to the motion, please?
Point of order. Did we go through the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Thanks.
Thank you for checking.
Mr. Marsh has seconded. It was a very quick public hearing. Mr. Freitas, could you speak to your motion, please?
Yes, I intend to support the motion. I do believe it is very de minimis, and I believe, other than a couple of technicalities, this would have been approved under administrative hearing versus being before this board. I see no reason to deny the petitioners this request under those circumstances. And I believe that staff has covered all of the standards adequately.
Thank you, Mr. Freitas. Mr. Marsh. I support the variance, this is totally de minimis, and I appreciate staff's candor that this needs to be remedied so you don't take a lot of public time on this kind of thing. 3.6 inches, and I'm glad that we had all this public rigor over it, and I can rest in peace on it now.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Is there, are there any other board members that wish to comment? Seeing none, please vote. That motion passes with six yes votes. Again, I would like to read that any party agreed by this decision has 30 days to appeal to Superior Court. The 30-day appeal period commences to run upon mailing of the written decision. That brings us to case 2009-067. The petitioners are Tim and Anna Moss. Is the petitioner here this evening? Thank you. Mr. Barrett, I believe this is your case, since you're still the only one over there. Could you speak to the sufficiency of notice, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our 48 public hearing notices were mailed for this item. We received one of the public hearing notices back in support of the request, and the applicant submitted nine letters from neighbors in support of the variance request. There were no negative comments, no community council comments, and the property was posted and advertised.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Could you proceed with your presentation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request to encroach the 50-foot rear yard setback in the R6 district to allow a garage to have a 26-foot setback from the rear lot line. The plan for the property is on page two, and there is a topo on page three right next The applicant's have a legal conforming lot and house. The property is steeply sloped. The elevation change is 100 feet over the entire depth of the lot, and this is an overall slope of about 29%. Most of the grade change occurs at the bottom of the property. It's very steep, if you look at that topo map on page three. The bottom of the lot is on the left-hand side. I've got the north at the bottom of the page, trying to keep it consistent with the way the asphalt was drawn. You can see how steep it is at the entrance to the lot, and as you get up to the top of the property, how much the contour lines start to spread out. The property is so steeply sloped, so, is that a spoonerism? Is so steeply sloped. The property is so steeply sloped that the driveway is actually on lots three and four before it comes across through the subject lot. That's just an indication of what the terrain is like out in this area. That, because of the driveway location, we do have in a condition for recording and access easement on the municipal form, just to make sure the access stays legal for all three of the properties. As I mentioned, the slope has caused the structures on the subject lot to be located up at the west side of the property, very near the top, where the grade change is not as severe. And then, in order to keep the garage separated from the house by 10 feet, because the applicant did not want to do an attached garage, in order to push the garage back the 10 feet, it pushed him a little bit further into that 50-foot rear yard setback. There is a small shed back on the rear property line as well. Because of the size of it, it's not allowed to be in the rear yard setback, and the applicant has stated that he will move the shed to a conforming location as part of the garage construction. Regarding the standards, number one, there exists extraordinary or physical, extraordinary, exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances to the subject property. The standard is partially met, the lot is steeply sloped, and out of a lot size of 56,000 square feet, I would say, on a very approximate, looking at the property, there are only about 18,000 square feet of the property on the west side that would be relatively easy to build on without some major terrain-altering activities. The large rear and side yard setbacks in the R6 district further reduce the buildable area for this property. However, the standard's only partially met because the steep slope is common throughout this area and is not peculiar to this property. Standard two, because of these physical circumstances, strict application would create an exceptional or undue hardship. The standard is partially met. It's partially met because standard one is only partially met. However, the house does not currently have a garage, and garages are common in this area. So to deny the garage at this location near the house would seem to create something of an undue hardship should the variance be denied. Standard three, the hardship is not self-imposed, that standard is also partially met. Again, the slope is a definite physical condition to the property, and it can be related to the need for the variance, but the slope is not a unique feature in this area. The second part of that standard, the need for the variance, is a result of the actions of the applicant. Well, the applicant did not plot the property, and he certainly didn't create the slope, but he did build the house, and it appears that the garage location and the size of the garage may not have been taken into full consideration at the time, and now the applicant, his only recourse is to seek the variance. But I would point out, again, the steepness of the lower part of the property and the need to give the house some type of usable yard area, and yet still keep the garage fairly near the house. This does seem to me be the most logical location for the garage. Standard number four, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the use of adjacent property. These lots are so large and so steeply sloped that it's almost impossible to tell what your neighbor is doing, so there's very little likelihood of being any adverse impact. There have been public letters in support, there aren't any structural separation issues, drainage and runoff are not a problem, the encroachment's not visually obvious. The encroachment's not visually obvious. Standard five, the variance, if granted, is in keeping with the intent of the code. The standard's met. A garage... The garage is just a dimensional setback variance, and a garage certainly does not change the character of the zoning district. Standard six, if granted, does not adversely affect health, safety, welfare. The standard's met. There have been no health or safety issues identified. And standard seven, if granted, it is the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land. Well, at a 50 percent encroachment, we probably cannot say that the encroachment is de minimis. But a garage is a reasonable addition to the property considering winter weather. A smaller garage could have been built and moved towards the east, but that would take up a good portion of the level area, the usable yard area of the property that's labeled on the drawing on page two as parking area. So it does seem that although the garage is fairly large, this is the most reasonable location for it. However, as standards one, two, three, and seven are not substantially met, the department cannot recommend for approval. However, there are three conditions on pages eight and nine should the board find for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Are there any questions of staff? Mr. Burkhardt.
I'm looking at the photo on page 11 and the aerial photograph. And so the lot that's just to the west of this is that unbuilt in terms of the tree area there? Or I guess there is a home on it, but it's not directly aligned with this parcel? It's really aligned with the parcel to the south of this. Is that correct?
I believe so, Mr. Burkhardt. If you bear with me a minute, I'll see if I have a color housing stock map. I believe it's vacant. I just don't recall.
Mr. Burkhardt, Mr. Barrett, if you look on page 12, if that lot configuration is correct, I think you're correct, Mr. Burkhardt, that the house is probably built more to the south on that lot on the back side.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, were the pictures in everyone's package color? Because the slope's pretty dramatic on some of those. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Yes. Are there any other questions of staff? Mr. Van Flyen.
Yes. I'm looking at the pictures also on page 58 and 59, 60. Is there a garage attached or built into this house? I can't tell from the pictures.
Mr. Chairman, no, there's no existing garage on the subject property.
Do you know, Mr. Barrett, if it was always the intent of the builder or developer to have a separate garage structure?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Van Flyen, I'm not even recollecting if the current owner's the original owner. You'll have to ask him.
Okay. And then, Mr. Barrett, looking at page 60, is that a fair depiction of how steep the lot is? Is that accurate?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay.
The 30 percent slope overall on the property, it's got slope.
Are there any other questions of staff? Seeing none, could the petitioner come forward, please? And could you state and spell your name for the record?
Yeah, my name is Jody Moss. It's J, the last name is M, U, S. I'm the brother of the petitioner.
Okay. Is there something in the file that allows...
Yes.
And I apologize if it's in there, allowing you to represent the petitioner.
It's on the application.
Thank you. Okay. Can you proceed? You have 10 minutes. Proceed with your presentation.
As I said, I'm the brother of Taffy Moss. And thank you for hearing my request for the variance for the proposed garage. I'm just going to go ahead and read what I wrote out. Based upon the recommendations sent to the planning department, standards four, five, and six have been met, and standards one, two, and three have only partially met. I would like to adjust standards one, two, three, and seven in support of the justification that these standards have been met. As for standard one, the planning staff state the steep slope is common throughout the area and is not peculiar to this lot. This statement is true, however, it does not state that numerous properties in the area have variance or grandfather rights to either the front or rear setbacks. This includes, but is not related to, the following properties. Lot 10, block one, Sutona Estates number two, which is a property next to my brother's property, has grandfather rights to the rear setbacks, and it actually has a 16-foot setback to the rear lot line. Also, lot 17, block one, Sutona Estates number two, did obtain a variance for a front yard setback approximately 10 years ago. Lot 18, block one, Sutona Estates, also has grandfather rights to the front yard setback. And lot 20, block one, Sutona Estates number two, also has grandfather rights to the front yard setback. And lot 24, Sutona Estates, also has grandfather rights to the front yard setback. All these properties are within a quarter to a half mile of my brother's property. All these properties have a variance or grandfather rights, and because they're in the left-of-the-air, they may be found within the setback requirements. The steep slopes exist through the entire sleepy house subdivision and Sutona Estates subdivision. Based upon the certain information, it's our argument that standard one is met by the fact that numerous properties in the area have needed to obtain variance or owe about grandfather rights in order to build within the setback requirements. As for standard two, as stated in the previous justification, for standard one, it is our opinion that standard one has been... It is our opinion that it's been met, and also standard two has also been met. The proposed garage should meet the standard since the president for variance of grandfather rights has been established in this area. And in regards to standard three, the planning department states that this standard is only partially met and implies that the request for variance for the proposed garage may be self-imposed. To give a brief history, my brother built his own house. It was his dream house. And he did the honest job of laboring himself about seven years ago in the summer in the fall of 2002. My brother, at the time, was in good health and lived a normal life. He's always used his hands to construct castle buildings, such as tables, chests, et cetera, out of wood and steel. In short, my brother is very industrious person. Approximately four years ago, my brother was diagnosed with Parkinson's disease. This disease has progressed and is leaving my brother's motor skills. In short, my brother's lifestyle has significantly changed in the last few years with the progression of the disease and the love and lives that most consider normal life. With the help of another life and failing, he relented of a life with great attitude about his condition. He wanted to make life easier for himself, his wife, and his family, and wants to build a garage. The proposed garage would allow a safe environment for him to get healing out of his vehicle, and especially during other conditions. The proposed garage would also be used for a shop area that would allow for his tools that he uses for building. This is therapeutic for my brother who helped him keep him up on his own motor skills. If my brother would have known what his health conditions would be, would have built this house, I'm sure his plan would have been different for the house construction. However, since he did not have a future in mind in the future back then, the house was built to meet his normal lifestyle. Since his disease is not self-imposed, neither should the need for this variance be considered self-imposed. It is our opinion that standard three is also a met. Any regards to standard four? The planning staff says that a smaller garage could be built in the parking area. It also states that the proposed garage is live and not in use. So the need for the size of the garage is addressed. Any other justification for standard three? Well, maybe a shop area too, which it would just be a good idea to have a good shop area. In response to the garage being built in the parking area, this parking area allows for a turnaround area prior to starting down the driveway. The driveway maybe off the turnaround area is approximately 10 to 15 percent slope. If the garage is built in the parking area, you take away the turnaround area, you probably have to back down the driveway. This would be unsafe for not only my brother, his wife, and his family, but he would guess that would be coming to visit him on his house. In my opinion, that standard seven has been met. It's a 25-foot rear setback to the proposed garage as the minimum variance that would make it possible. The proposed is the minimum variance that would make possible the use of the land. And concluding, I'd like to point out my brother has obtained numerous studies and support from the hearers, and does have community support for this request. It is our opinion that all seven standards have been met, and we respectfully request the board grant the 25-foot variance for the rear setback to the proposed garage.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Are there any questions of the petitioner? Mr. Burkhardt.
Yes, do any of those letters of support come from the property owner to the west? That backs up against...
Oh, the one at lot 10, I believe it is.
Right.
I don't believe there is one in there. He hasn't found one. I pay for my name and I don't have a real hearing, which is lots one and three.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Any other questions? Seeing none, does staff have any questions?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. With that, the case is now open for the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Mr. Marsh, do you have any rebuttal? He's indicated he does not. With that, the matter rests with the board. Could I have a positive motion from the board, please? Mr. Burkhardt, was there a hand in it? Still wrestling with whether I look at the screen or look at... Oh, okay. Mr. Burkhardt.
In case 2009-067, I move that we grant a variance in the R6 district, a variance from AMC 21.40.080, which requires a 50-foot rear yard setback to allow a proposed garage to have a 26-foot setback from the rear lot line, subject to conditions one, two, and three on eight and nine of the packet.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt. May I have a second, please? Mr. Van Flyen, thank you, Mr. Van Flyen. Mr. Burkhardt, could you speak to your motion, please?
I think that all seven standards are substantially met. I think standard one is met. I do agree with staff that it's only partially met in this case, but it's... The reason it's only partially met is because other properties in this neighborhood are slope-affected. But I think it's met in that the effect of the slope is... In terms of the degree of the slope, it is very large in this case, and I think that outweighs that characteristic being shared by other properties in the neighborhood. So I think standard one is met. I think standard two is at least partially met as... And I concur with staff's analysis on that. I think standard three is met, although the petitioner's representative indicated that the petitioner has an illness. I think that variance runs with the land, and I think, actually, standard three is met without taking that into account. And I think that's actually the way it should be, that we shouldn't, as a rule, grant a variance based on the physical capacities or incapacities of the individual petitioner. But I think standard three is substantially met. And I think the slope-affected condition really enters into the number of possible locations for the garage. And I think that, in this particular case, with the adjacent property owner to the west being within 16 feet of the property line, in terms of that being grandfathered, in other similar cases that we've seen in front of us, I think 26 feet is a substantial distance away from the property line. And so I don't think the hardship is really the fault of the petitioner. I think I agree with staff that standard four is met, that I don't think it affects adjacent properties. I think standard five is met. Standard six is met. I don't think it adversely affects the health and safety of the people of Municipality of Anchorage. And on balance, I think standard seven is met to have a garage located in this parcel on this slope that I think, given the large degree of slope, I think standard seven is met, so I intend to support the variance request.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt. Mr. Van Flyen.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Burkhardt's comments. I think they're astute. And I would emphasize that I think one of the overriding factors in this particular case, and I should note, I intend to vote for it, is just how dramatic the slope is of this particular parcel. I think if you look at it on a plat and you look at the playing application itself, it's a very dramatic request for a variance, one of the largest ones we've dealt with, I think, that I've seen in a long time, and maybe one of the largest variances in terms of just total incursions that, if it's approved, would be approved. And I would want the record to be clear that the evidence here is fairly dramatic. The photographs and the slope of this is... This is a mountainous region where this lot is located, and the lot itself to be usable, practical. Some accommodation, I think, has to be made to do that. And so, looking at that totality of the factors that we're evaluating, I find it fairly compelling. So I intend to vote for the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Van Flyen. Is there anyone else, any other board members wishing to comment on the case? I do intend to support the motion. I'd like to compliment the petitioner's representative. From my perspective here, he looked at the staff's comments and helped me in addressing... He addressed the staff comments that... Identifying the standards that weren't met. And one of the comments that he did bring up was with regard to standard seven, which I was having the hardest time with. But he did comment that this is the minimum in that, in locating this garage as such, it allows for the maneuvering for vehicles turning around to drive down that steep driveway, which kind of goes back to the topography again, Mr. Van Flyen. But I'd like to compliment him on addressing the... At least from my perspective, the standards that I think needed to be addressed, and I intend to support the motion. Is there anyone else, any other comments? If not, please vote. That motion passes with six positive votes. Again, for the record, any party agreed by this decision has 30 days to appeal to Superior Court. The 30-day appeal period commences to run upon mailing of the written decision. With that, that ends our public hearings, the three cases we had before us this evening. Reports. I don't have any reports. Anything to report? Board member comments? Anybody have any comments? Mr. Freitas.
Yes, I had one comment, maybe a question. Going through the various applications over the last couple of years, when it comes to disclosure, is there a reason that we don't have the applicant's employer on the application form? Because sometimes there...
Because sometimes there could be a conflict, possibly them working for somebody that we have a conflict with. Has that ever been brought up? Is that something that should be considered, or is there something that prohibits that? Because many times, we don't know that, but that could create a conflict.
The applicant's employer? Mr. Barrett, is there, I know there's a policy on conflicts of interest. Has that ever been brought up?
Mr. Chairman, I can see Mr. Freitas' point. No, I don't think it has, not to my recollection. I'll look into it in the morning.
I don't know if that answered your question, but the question was raised.
No, I think just look into it. I have no idea if there's been any conflicts, but in full disclosure, if we don't know those types of things, we can't be accurate in our disclosure representations.
I guess I agree with that. Your point there is that I think disclosures are for conditions that are known. I'm not sure in terms of, you know, what we should be, or staff should be doing in terms of, you know, a person's, you know, history. I could think that employment and any number of things that you might have knowledge or a friend of a friend, and I guess in terms of somebody's privacy, I think it's maybe opening up a can of worms that, yeah, the professional life is one thing, but I guess where do you draw the line then if you're going to go past that, that, you know? I don't know. But it should be something that I think staff can look into.
And just a quick example, if we were to deny an application, I have no idea who they talk to and who they work for, but they say they work for a direct competitor, and they might say, oh, you knew I did, and that's why, you know, it could, I see a potential problem if we were to deny an application and there was something like that that was unknown to us.
Thank you, Mr. Freitas. Are there any other? Mr. Van Flyen?
Yeah, I was just going to point out, I think the burden is on us as board members. If we sense a relationship to disclose that, oh, that's Bob, and Bob, I'm aware of Bob because he works for another company that I do business with, the burden is sort of on us to make the disclosure that we have a conflict, because the applicants won't necessarily know that. And otherwise, I kind of agree with Mr. Burkhardt that it's the applicant's property, not their employer's property. It's not the employer's, they don't care if there's, I would imagine if you're a manager at Cars, for example, Cars does not care if you get a variance for your fence. Only the applicant does. But if you know somebody because you work with them or you have a relationship with them, then it's up to us, I think, for us to make the disclosure.
Mr. Van Flyen?
Two seconds of ethics today.
Any other comments?
Does that mean with the remainder of the day that Mr. Van Flyen is unethical?
Yeah, that's what it means.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Big.
I was going to shift gears just for a second, and I think you spoke to it a little bit in case H two, two thousand nine dash zero six eight, but the packet described the reason for it being before our board as a survey error, and as a design professional, I guess I would like the record to show that the reason it was before us was not because of a survey error and was for other matters that were more technical in nature, but if Mr. Forbes' reputation was damaged, I think we should do what we can to set that record straight.
I agree, Mr. Big. However, I don't believe you are, and I know I'm not a registered surveyor. I'm an engineer, so I really don't care as much about surveyors as I do a lot of engineers. But no, I agree exactly, and it's very easy to make the comment that it was a surveyor kind of off the cuff on things like that, but just wanting him to walk through the process of how houses get built, there's an opportunity for error in a number of places along the way, and surveyor can be kind of the catch-all a lot of times for things that come towards us, but that's not the case. Hopefully, that's not what was conveyed to Mr. Forbes here this evening.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Burkhardt?
Didn't we have a bunch of cases next month?
Yes.
Six as of tonight, and drew the line. That's why for the administrative variance code changes, next month will just be an informational item, and we'll get into it in July.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. With that?